Good evening, everyone. It is June 9th at 2020 Tuesday evening at 7:03 PM. We do have a quorum and we will begin the Board of Selectmen meeting for this date. I hope this finds everyone well. Let me read into the, hold on a second if you don't mind. I will read into. All right, my apologies. Let me read into the record this evening. Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 orders superseding certain provisions of the open meeting law GL Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order concerning imposition on strict limitations of the number of people that may gather in one place. Meetings in the town of Oxford will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. We will strive to provide access to such meetings via a link to call in or other similar options. In the event we are unable to accommodate the same, despite best efforts, we will post recorded sessions of the meeting as soon as possible following the same. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings. For individuals who wish to participate remotely, you can go to your computer and go to our Zoom meeting, or you can call in and listen to the meeting via phone at 646-876-9923. All right, excellent. So this evening, we will start off with the Oxford update to the COVID-19 response and with our Town Manager Jen Callahan.
You're muted.
You're muted.
Madam Town Manager, you're muted.
That was not helpful. I'm so sorry. I said before I go into the update out of.
That's okay.
We have a moment of silence for Alfonso Esposito and Joseph McDonald. I don't know if that's, you can pull that up in your packet, Madam Chair.
Yes, I will. My apologies. So we will have a moment of silence for Alfonso Esposito and Joseph McDonald. Please take a moment to remember Oxford residents Alfonso Esposito Jr. and Joseph McDonald Sr. Mr. Esposito worked for the Oxford School District for over 40 years and spent his spare time volunteering for various town committees. Mr. McDonald worked as a reserve police officer in Oxford for many years. These members of our community will be sorely missed. Excellent, thank you. All right, Madam Town Manager, if you'd like to proceed with your COVID-19 update?
Thank you, thank you. I would keep hoping that these updates will get shorter tonight. It's not too bad, but we have a lot of votes that we have to take once again in order to get us to a point where we're adopting some of the new orders coming out of the Governor's office. Having said that, as of today, the town has been notified by the Department of Public Health that we have actually 74 Oxford residents that have been confirmed positive for COVID-19. As you know, the last update that you would have received in your packet, we were at 69. So we continue to climb steadily in this community. Additionally, it is with deep regret to have received notice that we had yet another Oxford resident who passed away. That makes us a total of nine that occurred today from the Clerk's office. Once again, we continue to post updates and information, some of which we'll go over this evening, that relate to a variety of steps and procedures that the town is taking to address the pandemic. Once again, a lot of people are very familiar with the fact that the Governor on June 1st had filed an executive order regarding the Phase 2 of slowly reopening the Commonwealth's businesses and also municipal services. And with regard to that, we are going to be taking up further on in our actual agenda the potential to adopt new orders and procedures to allow for outside dining. And also, we have been addressing at the local level the previous week's phase in of allowing certain municipal recreational areas to slowly reopen. I just want to point out once again that many of these decisions are not just based on the fact that the Governor makes a declarative. There's a lot of finer details, and so sometimes the public sees one aspect of it. But yet, the details is really where we have to come in and weigh that, along with budget considerations as we're slowly getting back to normal. So last week, I wanted to let you know that I did meet with department heads to discuss plans for reopening Town Hall during this pandemic. As you know, we have actually been one of the few Town Halls in the area, which we did a one-person, one-office right from the very beginning with rotating staff in and out to try to keep our staff as healthy as possible. We're actually moving forward slowly with how we can actually implement gradually opening our Town Hall. Remember, we have a town meeting coming up and a town election, and it's very important for us to make sure we keep our town employees as healthy as possible. And having said that, we have not had tremendous objections to the work that we've been doing remotely and also in person. We had adopted many procedures for areas of our previous permitting in our building departments and our assessors departments. And I think we've done a really fabulous job. And so we're just going to do that very carefully because on top of all of the things that we want to do for municipal opening, we have all of the burden of trying to also phase in the requirements of the Governor's orders. Having said that, tonight, there are two things. One, in your packet, you will see a memo that actually was a result of that department head meeting about our recreational facilities and our properties. And you will see under that particular tab that an announcement had gone out with regards to the phased reopening of certain town recreational facilities. This was a joint collaborative decision between our public safety officials, our DPW Director and the Town Manager, and also our Board of Health Agent. This was looking very discreetly at all of the requirements and also trying to understand what could we provide. We have put that and posted that up on Facebook, and it gives the properties that are open with restrictions, such as skateboard parks, carpuncle pond for fishing only, our major parks, Greenbrier Rural Field, Jocelyn Soccer Field, Oxford Middle School Fields, and Oxford High School Track. But that is open, and all of those places are open for walking, running, hiking, biking, and other individual-focused exercise activities. No contact sports are allowed on those particular fields where you would typically see them. There's no shared athletic equipment activities. There's no pickup games, organized games, or tournaments. This is per the order of the Governor. So we are not allowed to do that at this point. Jocelyn Park is another one that's obviously open, but believe it or not, it's open for passive recreation, walking, individual activities such as yoga, tai chi, or calisthenics. Again, no events are being issued for the use of our bandstand. Closed until further notice, until we get, you know, a better ability and also permission from the Governor's orders. Other areas that are closed for recreation involve any places that are closed in. So obviously, our Oxford Community Center is closed. Basketball courts are closed. All the baseball and softball fields are closed unless they're going to receive approval by our Board of Health and Recreation Commission because they're very strict guidelines for being able to use those fields for particular team sports, but no active games, tournaments, and the like. They have to be used in a very narrow-focused practice only, and there are a number of things that have to be approved. And so I know that you might have been hearing from some of the, you know, athletic directors for softball, baseball. And we are now, since we've issued this and spoken with the Board of Health Agent and a number of other people, the Recreation Commission Chairman, you know, the intent here is to put it through some scrutiny. At the end of the day, we need to make sure that whatever the league is desiring to do conforms with the Governor's orders and also what the town's directives would be from a Board of Health perspective. But as you can see, there are a number of things, including volleyball courts. Our playgrounds will remain closed. Our dog park will even remain closed because it's almost impossible to take a dog park that was meant for being open, for dogs to run around in, to now actually try to maintain six-foot distance and also not to have dogs sharing things. And if you read the details, it's actually more onerous to try to open it up and to try to, we call it enforce it or police it than it is to wait till we get to the point where we can completely open up with not having that same regard to the details that are necessary. Obviously, public restrooms, our Carpuncle Beach House. Right now, there is no swimming or picnicking or grilling at Carpuncle Park. So that went out, and the other piece of that relates to something that I've had a lot of questions about is whether we were going to have summer programming out of the Oxford Community Center. And obviously, if anybody has started to read how difficult the programming would be along with the budgetary constraints that we're going to be facing in fiscal '21, most communities have actually canceled their summer programs. That would be summer programs that involve field trips, all-day children's programs, using the public facilities in a closed manner. And until we get a much better ability to do these, what used to be programs that were taken for granted with much larger groups of children and with fewer staff, we're not going to be conducting that. And that also includes basketball camps for the summer. We're hoping that by the fall, we'll have a much better idea of what we can start to go into for the next recreation season. The next item for the update is to just remind the general public that the Board of Selectmen did meet in an open session to declare the town meeting will officially be on Thursday, June 25th, at 7:00 PM at the Oxford High School. As you know, we sent out notification for last day for registration to vote. And also during that 911 call that was reversed, we also reminded people that our town election, which would have been held much earlier in May, is scheduled for Tuesday, June 30th. And the time that the polls will be open is from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And the last deadline day for registration to vote for the annual town meeting, you know, excuse me, annual town election will be June 19th from 2:00 to 4:00 PM and 7:00 to 8:00 PM here at the Town Hall on the back ramp there. The next thing is to let the Board know that this bill that has passed between the House and the Senate that we've been waiting for has to do with town meeting explicitly. I've spoken about it a number of times in our previous meetings about the possibility that the Board would have the option of taking up a reduction in quorum for town meeting because, as you know, we have to put a whole number of steps in place to make this town meeting possible and still abide by the public health measures and orders that are coming from the Governor. This bill did pass to allow the local communities the option of reducing the quorum for town meeting. Not necessarily to say you can't have more people show up than whatever the quorum reduction option that the Board might choose, but this is to ensure us that we can conduct a meeting if we don't reach that quorum level of 100 people. And so that's going to be very important for us to pass our budget by June 30th and so that we do not have to go into a 112 budget, which would be very difficult. So I wanted the Board to know that there are some requirements with that law that has now been signed by the Governor as of Saturday, and that is that we have posted a meeting for next Tuesday. We had to have a seven-day posting notice, which would coincide with your meeting that was scheduled for June, yeah, June, next week, June 16th. And so that actually coincides with us well, but the notice had to be published for seven days. So the public has adequate notice that the Board is going to take up a discussion and evaluate whether they would like to adopt this local provision for reduction of option of our actual quorum requirements for town meeting. So that will be next week. I also included a copy of the reference for yourselves of the bill in your packets. I know that there's been questions about how our collections have been. As we have been facing this, our local collections from tax purposes, I did put in your packet to allow you to know that for our spring collections as of June 4th, we were at 96.23% for real estate tax receivables for fiscal year '20. And we also have additionally been at 98.8% for personal property receivables and then also collected on excise, which is the lowest amount, at 93.4%. We did have a lot of people who were looking to postpone interest payments and delay their payment for excise. The next item is just to let you know that Worcester Regional Chamber Commerce continues to put out a lot of resources for our local businesses, and they are hosting a number of upcoming webinars to help businesses actually get back on their feet. And I encourage any of our small businesses to take them up on that because they have been deemed very helpful. And I've had a few business owners come to me and tell me that the information that they had heard about from those webinars has been instrumental. And the final item is to let you know that next week also, as we will have on our agenda, the option to consider for town meeting quorum reduction. As you know, that the impact for COVID that I've mentioned in a number of meetings on our budgetary health is something that isn't just germane to the town of Oxford. It's also happening all across the state. State lawmakers and also major officials who do finance projections have been encouraging towns to take a very hard look at their fiscal '21 budget projections and also their balanced budgets that they had already put together. I will be meeting with the Finance Committee on Wednesday, June 10th, with our Finance Director, who both she, myself, and all department heads have been reviewing our budget to try to meet what is being considered to be conservative projections, to look at level funding our budget, which would bring us into a percentage reduction that would be something that right now we're being told is quite likely once the state passes its overall state budget. And consequently, I'll be presenting that to you next week. Even though I've already presented our previous balanced budget, it will be a budget that will be more reminiscent of last year. And that is in an effort to put money back into our overall non-spending category so that we can be prepared once we get the real true figures, you know, from the state. And that would conclude my COVID update. And like I said, I know we're going to be taking up some more information in your meeting tonight.
Excellent, excellent. All right, thank you, Madam Town Manager. All right, let's move on to the next agenda item, which is the use of outdoor space for food and alcohol service, which is part of the COVID-19 Phase 2 of Governor Baker's edict. So Jen, do you want to go ahead with that?
Sure. One of the things that was actually recently announced by the Governor as part of Phase 2 was to allow food establishments. Prior to this announcement, we're only allowed to deliver, you know, takeout. And now we're going to allow food establishments once they have passed a particular process. If this Board so chooses to go forward and adopt a new policy that would allow us to sort of fast-track these businesses that have been unable to host people in restaurant environments and, you know, places that would provide food and drinking to their patrons. And so right now, as you know, many establishments have had to go through processes with the planning boards, with the zoning boards, with our Board of Health Agents, our fire prevention, and they go through a very tough scrutiny. And then they get their license that is typically permitted for delivery of that service to residents and visitors alike outside of town by this Board. So this new order allows the town to go forward and create an expedited, actual fast-tracking process. I've spoken with legal counsel. What you have in your packet this evening is actually a policy and procedure that you would actually look at adopting and then also adopting this application. And what this basically means is that rather than coming back for every single case to this Board, which would take too long for businesses to get up and running, is that you actually devolve some of that administrative work that gets done anyway before somebody would come back with a completed application to this Board. It's an attempt to actually allow the process to get done administratively and to get done by those people who are commissioned through their special licenses to make these approvals that would have naturally come before the Board at the end of the day for either a liquor license or the ability to have a common vic license. So this is to bypass all of that because it's considered a temporary fix to allow businesses that have food and drink to be able to actually move some of their business outdoors. Having said that, if you look at, and I'm not going to read all of the procedures and the rules, but what this is hoping to be able to do is that I'm looking for the Board to make an approval of the outdoor seating policy that has been provided to us by legal counsel and also the application materials as written. Please rest assured that regardless of what we get for requests, we will put those businesses as a priority and make sure that we get, whether it's the Building Commissioner out there to examine a tent, whether it's our Board of Health Agent and our Board of Health Chair to evaluate whether the plan that they've submitted on how they're going to deliver food safely and meet the requirements of the law are upheld. And there's a number of things, you know, making sure that when we allow for outdoor seating, that might be in a parking lot that formerly was a parking lot, that we make sure that people can't drive into or back into patrons. And there's a whole number of public safety things. If this Board were to wait for all of that checklist and then for us to come back to it, it's just delaying the ability to get these businesses up and running. So tonight, Legal Counsel has given me information to hopefully impress upon this Board to recommend that you adopt an outdoor seating policy as provided in your packets and also to move that the Town Manager would be the authorized approval of the license amendments that would be consistent with the Governor's June 1st, 2020 executive orders. Just before you make any of those motions and open it for discussion, I do want to just also explain that the ABCC is, you know, rule neutral on this as well. They are an agreement that this isn't changing whatever the licenses that the person had prior to their moving to the outside of their establishment. So this isn't creating something new, other than a temporary ability for them to actually provide with very restrictive conditions to begin with. So I mean, God bless the businesses that want to actually go through this and start this up because this isn't easy for, you know, all of the service personnel that have to go through this. So that, I just wanted to let you know, is something that many communities are entertaining right now. And I think it's really would behoove us to get our community up and running with the provided details and requirements that are spelled out in the Governor's bill.
Excellent, thank you. And Madam Town Manager, I mean, thank you so much. This was a big undertaking to get this to us so quickly. So thank you, you know, for doing that. I'm going to open it up to the Board if anyone has any follow-up questions or concerns or anything they'd like to speak on. Selectman Troyano, do you have anything you'd want to talk about, ask about, or anything?
I just have a quick question. Assuming that we go through and make this vote, what are the businesses looking at for a turnaround time from the time that they request authority to do the outside service till when they're actually given the green light to do it? I know you'll probably be getting a lot of requests, but like a ballpark time in case anyone asks?
I wouldn't be able to say that exactly right now. I would hope that I could move as expediently as possible. But don't forget, there is a requirement of the businesses to provide not only an area plan, but to also provide in detail how they are actually going to actually conduct their business. And so, you know, what we're hoping to do is either take it on a case-by-case basis. Some businesses might be able to get this information into us quickly, and other businesses might take a little bit longer. What I'd like to do is if we get some businesses that might be sort of pooled together is that my objective would be to bring those department heads or administrative oversight individuals together. So we would all, you know, get the packet of information, and we would design a schedule quickly to get them out. This is no real difference than when we do our overall licensing, you know, all of those licenses that you read that we do in December that are very extensive. Just imagine, we have individual department heads who are responsible for going out and inspecting those premises, whether it's our Board of Health Agent, whether it's our Fire Prevention, our police personnel. And so this is not necessarily going to require all of that, but it will require, you know, a check-off and an approval from those people. And so what I would hope is that if there's something that needs to be adjusted and needs to be fixed, that's our job. We work with them, and I would want to work with them as quickly as possible. But I would hope that as soon as we start with receiving a plan, any plan from any particular business, that that will be a major priority for me. So, you know, how fast? I just, I know that we're just going to adopt it tonight, and I would imagine that, you know, I'll convene everybody tomorrow, share the actual application process, and we'll talk a little bit more about what we anticipate for the flow of requests that are going to come in.
Thank you, that was all. Excellent, thank you. Selectman Daniels, do you have anything in regards to this particular matter?
One quick question. Just want to ask, this permit process is for existing businesses, and it's coming at no additional cost to the permit that they already have, correct? We are not urging them to fill out this permit?
No, not that I see in the application process. I think that would be kind of self-defeating. Although, like I said, it is going to be more work for us to do to get things going, but we understand the mutual benefit here. So, no. And again, it's not extending them additional things beyond November 1st as a temporary license for them to be able to, you know, be outside in terms of an approval process.
That's all I had, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Selectman Daniels. Selectman Sad.
Yes, a couple of questions. Is it going to require the Board to amend the existing liquor licenses?
No, no, it actually, it isn't. And that's, the ABCC has signed off that they will not need or require that because it really is not changing. You know, if they had only a license to do beer and wine, then that license to do beer and wine remains. They can't add to it, and they can't decide to adjust that. Same thing that if they had an entertainment license for indoors, but not for, but they, then they would be able to, you know, to petition us with the notion that they might want to provide that same entertainment outdoors, but we would look at, you know, what would be their operating hours and the like. But they can't say, I want to just bring in music without an entertainment license if they didn't have an entertainment license to begin with. That way, we're trying to not change what the Board of Selectmen or any number of Boards have done through site plan and review, but is to just, you know, change it temporarily to whatever they had to allow them to go outside and provide those services that they were providing inside, albeit in a reduced capacity with a number of restrictions. But better than nothing.
Right. Is this limited to just restaurants, food service?
I think anybody who has, yes, anybody who has a common vic license that was providing food inside a building or on a patio, some people had also a patio, but they had been not open because they, you know, the 10-person count was preventing them from being open. So even if they had a patio, it still has to go through this process to allow them to be permitted to go and do outdoor dining only because even if they had a patio that was set up before for, let's say, it could hold 50 or 75 patrons, now it may not be able to hold that. So we have to assure that they have the setup to reduce the capacity and uphold the Board of Health protective measures that are afforded in the legislation, not the legislation, the order from the Governor, sorry.
Okay. Now, what about clubs such as Knights of Columbus, Single Terry Warden Gun Club, BFW, American Legion?
Yeah, this right now is related to restaurants and dining facilities. And I would have to say that only. And I would have to say that only restaurants that were currently authorized to serve alcoholic beverages indoors. It's a way of trying to move it outside. It's meant to be both food and drink, as far as I know, and not just drink.
That's, that's the point I was trying to make, you know, because I'm sure there's going to be some questions. From some license holders that don't normally serve food with drink. Are going to want to serve drink outside. And I don't think that's the intent of what the governor is spelling out here. I think it has to be a combination of food and drink.
Correct.
That's all I have on that.
Okay. All right, Selectmen, and I don't have any questions. So I am going to look for a motion. To accept the outdoor seating policy and application material. Do I have a motion?
Make that motion.
Second the motion.
Excellent. We need, we need to take a roll call vote. So, Selectmen Triano.
Yes.
Selectmen Daniels?
Yes.
Selectmen Sad?
Yes.
And I also will vote yes. So we have four in the affirmative and one absent. We have another motion we need to make. I'm going to look for a motion that we move that the town manager be authorized to approve. Of license amendments consistent with the governor's June one, two thousand and twenty executive order. On behalf of the Board of Selectmen, I'm going to look for a motion for that.
Make that motion.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? No? Okay. Then I will, I also need a roll call vote on this. So Selectmen Triano?
Yes.
Selectmen Daniels?
Yes. Yes.
Selectmen Sad?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And I also vote yes. So we have four in the affirmative, one absent, and the motion passes. Excellent. Thank you very much. Okay. Let's see. I have here, let's just take a quick look here. Jen?
Yes.
We have, we have Paul Lawson on from Aquarion. Is he here to present for anything?
Um, yeah, there Paul, you're getting preferential treatment. This is good. I was going to say, yes, I, I don't have any problem moving that up. It's part of my town manager report.
Okay.
Couple of donation requests, but, but, but I would be more than happy to take that out of order, Madam Chair, if you would like me to do that.
Yeah. If you don't mind in that way, we can, I mean, not that we mind Paul hanging around. But if he would like to, you know, maybe stop getting bitten by mosquitoes and, and, you know, and things like that. If we can, if we want to take that before we hit the French River lease item, if that's okay with you, Madam Town Manager?
That would be great. So Aquarian. Is Representative Paul Lawson is here with us this evening. Thank you for being here. I was approached by Mr. King and Mr. Lawson about Aquarian Water's desire to help the town. With what has been a strategic initiative for beautification, in particular. Recognizing how important water is to plants and flowers and trees. Both Mr. King and Mr. Lawson had approached me and said that they were very, very interested in wanting to help us. They thought we started a great thing last year and wanted to help us by making generous donations to the town for our beautification efforts. Downtown in the amount of a thousand dollars. And obviously through Mass General Laws, Chapter forty fours. Section fifty three A and fifty three A and a half, it's up to the board to accept a monetary donation. But that wasn't enough for Aquarian Water. They also have offered to help with some regularity of assistance to water our flowers. Which actually require a lot of attentiveness and to allow us to use a very large watering container. That can be mounted to a truck. So if you see that going around town and if you see me driving the truck to water. With my friends from Aquarian, you'll know it's because of that. So that is in kind labor that they're willing to provide for us and also a container and using that. So let Paul speak to what motivated them to want to do this. Because I was very touched and I'm excited about the prospect that Aquarian wants to partner with us on this.
Excellent.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. Can you hear me, Jen?
Yes, I can. Yep.
Okay, I'm not too good at this Zoom. I had to have my daughter set it up for me.
Excellent.
Yeah. Thank you very much for having me tonight. And yeah, we just want to be involved in the community like we've said before. And I had spoke to Jen last fall about helping out with the plantings and this whole COVID thing kind of threw a little wrench and all that. But, you know, we still wanted to make the donation and help out with some of the watering when we can. You know, myself, Frank King, and even my staff, you know, if we have a few minutes during the day in the afternoon or whatever. Will be more than willing to, you know, take the water out and help, help out with some of the watering to take the burden off the parks department stuff. And just try to help out with the whole beautification project. Just part of what we, we wanted to do for, for the towns that we're involved in. So I guess, thank you for having me and thank you for moving that up. And anybody have any questions?
I just wanted to say thank you. It's very much appreciated and I think the DPW will be appreciative of it too. So it's one less thing they have to do. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, we, we work well with the DPW and also Matt from the Parks Department. I've been in touch with him, trying to just get a schedule down for, for the watering. And, you know, just try to help out the best we can.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So does anyone else have anything for Paul? No? Okay. All right. Well, Paul, thank you very much and thank you to Aquarian for that. I'm going to look for a motion to move that the board accept the said forthcoming. One thousand dollar cash donation in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter forty four, section fifty three A.
Make that motion.
Second that motion.
Excellent. Thank you. And if we can have a vote, please, we'll go down the line.
Yes.
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 And I vote yes. So that's four in the affirmative and one absent. The motion passes. And then the second motion is that I'll entertain a motion that the board accept the forthcoming gift of in kind property use. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter forty four, section fifty three A and one and a half.
Make that motion.
Second that motion.
We'll call for a vote?
Yes.
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 And I vote yes as well. So four in the affirmative, one absent, the motion carries. Thank you, Paul.
Okay, thank you. Now have a good evening and stay safe and I'll, I'll see you in the center of town.
Thank you. All right. Excellent. All right. Thanks, Madam Town Manager. And let's move on to the French River Educational Center lease renewal.
Yes, before the board this evening in your packets, you will see that the French River Educational Center. Which has a property at six seventy two Main Street for many years has actually leased that property from the town. And they have just started to come up on June thirtieth as the expiration of that lease. What we have done per typical protocol is to do a comparable market analysis of the town's rental property. To make sure that the proposed thirty thousand dollars. Per year for leasing the building, which actually is being leased by the French River Education Center, which is a nonprofit. And does a lot of good work and has partnered with the town in the past. This market analysis was done on the building, which is about a twenty three hundred square foot usable space building. And the comps that came back that was done by Remax, Kevin O'Connor as an owner and broker. Of Remax did the comparable properties for that type of building and for the rental per square foot. And it comes in with right around the range that we would be looking at. So that's something that I, I did not see was done in the past. And so that has been done and tonight, I know it's, it's important for them to consummate that lease. And it's, is in draft form that we have had its first vetting through legal counsel. And it basically, we were just awaiting for that market appraisal to make sure that we within the range. And so knowing what our budget is potentially looking like, I would strongly encourage that we consummate this lease. But it will be for one year. Beginning July.
Okay. Board members, any?
Yes, I do. Why is it one year?
Because we would have to do an extensive RFP that would go out. Which means that and or a regular bid. And that could actually jeopardize their ability to actually execute this. And, and that would be something that right now they would rather go with a one year lease. And, and I thought that that was something that was negotiated with them. And it's not that we wouldn't want to do more, but in order to do it, it has to be done in a different way. And, and this was brought to us at a time where it was more important for them just to have it executed. And so noting, noting that nothing else was out of sorts, other than the fact that there had never been. You know, that market analysis done, I feel comfortable now that it's, it's accurate. And we would be able to at least execute that one year agreement.
I think, I think a tendency at will at this point would be appropriate based on circumstances involved. Especially with the, you know, with the budget situation that we may be facing in the future. Maybe things will be better in another year. Maybe we can adjust it. So T A W at this time, I think is appropriate.
Thank you for that input.
Excellent. Anyone else? Okay, then I will, I'm looking for, I am looking for a motion to approve the French River Education Center lease.
I make that motion.
Excellent. Excellent. All right. Any more discussion? All right, I will call for the vote.
I will abstain from this one.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So we have three in the affirmative, one absent and one abstention. So the motion carries. Okay, excellent. All right, we are moving on to our town manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First order of business is the approval of minutes for your May twenty sixth meeting. All members were present.
Excellent. I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes of May twenty sixth, twenty twenty.
I make that motion.
Second that motion.
All right, any discussion? All in favor? Let's call for the vote.
Yes.
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 And I vote yes as well. Four in the affirmative, one absent.
Thank you. The next item has to do its declaration of surplus for the fire EMS. The board is in receipt of a request from Chief McDonald to declare the following four items as surplus. Two metal desks, a cannon fax machine, copier, imagistic. I don't even, I've never even heard of that, imagistic copier. So anyway, but there, those are the only items that the board can consider to declare surplus.
Do I have a motion to declare those items as surplus?
Make that motion.
Second that motion.
Thank you. All right. All right, all in favor?
Yes.
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 And I vote yes. Four in the affirmative, one absent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item has to do with yet another donation. We are in receipt of information, as you can see in your packets, relative to the Daughters of the American Revolution. Or fondly known as D A R. In the historical commission, they had purchased two shrubs. For the monument to be known as the Monument for the Provisional Army. The shrubs have been planted by Russ, Russ Pitco, Dick Shumway and Helen Coria. Therefore, in the accordance of Mass General Laws, once again, Chapter forty four, section fifty three and a half. Fifty three A and a half, I'd ask the board to accept those said gifts of property that was bequeathed to the town.
Excellent. I'm looking for a motion to have the board accept the gift of personal property in accordance with Mass General Law. Chapter forty four, section fifty three A and one half.
Make the motion.
Second that motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
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 And I vote yes. That's four in the affirmative and one absent.
Madam Chair, before I move on, I just wanted to let you know I will be forthcoming. The same group of people have been very good at finding yet another person want to step up and do a donation. And, and the details will be provided to the board hopefully by their next meeting. But is the donation of a new flagpole at the old historic schoolhouse on Jocelyn, in Jocelyn Park. So that, that's an exciting endeavor and we'll talk about that at the next meeting, but the same group had worked hard on that. The next item is thirty three B transfers. The finance director has requested that the board approve the following thirty three B transfers. Although the below items that you'll see in your packet have been identified, the overall budget is what needs to be balanced. And it will be made whole by requested transfers. Many of these kinds of transfers are routine at the end of the fiscal year. And it does require some sign offs, you know, collectively between the finance committee and the board of selectmen. And the finance committee will be having a meeting tomorrow night. So I have our finance director, if she would like to add anything, Katie McKenna is on the line with us.
Hi, I know I've been listening in, kind of multitasking tonight. I think you have all the materials in front of you. So I mean, I can go through this if you want, or I can just entertain questions. I don't know if you've had a chance to review it. But I, I will just start off by saying that beginning in March, anyway. I will look through all the general fund accounts and project them out to June thirtieth based on current spending and expected spending. To see where we're going to end up at June thirtieth. And if any budget, the bottom line, looks like it's going to be over expended. Then we're going to want to ask for these transfers. Some of them we expected as early as, I think, the beginning of last year. Because of the way the budget was structured, specifically between the selectmen's office and the town manager's office. There's a couple of different positions in different offices and they were, they were kind of combined. So now for fiscal twenty one, I've pushed all the salaries into the town manager's budget. So that we won't have to keep coming back for these transfers. So that it's really just housekeeping in that respect. The other items, they all have different explanations, you know, different things happen during the year. But I do check on this, you know, beginning in March, maybe even earlier, and just kind of look forward to see how this is going. So we have a few items here. I'd be happy to comment on any of them. But most of the, the forms in front of you will have explanations.
All right, board members, any questions for Katie?
So I guess you would need to vote on these if you don't have any questions or I can go into more detail. It's the board's pleasure.
Okay. I will, I'll. Motion that we move to approve the thirty three B transfers as written?
Make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Excellent. Any discussion? Nope. Okay, we'll call for the vote.
Yes.
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 And I vote yes as well. So four in the affirmative, one absent, it passes.
Katie, just, just so you know, the board had already taken a vote previously to allow their electronic signatures to be used, to be served. So these requests for transfers would normally have each of their signatures and they'll be done electronically.
That's perfect. And I, I will bring this in front of the finance committee tomorrow night also for approval. And we can get these accounts whole. I appreciate your help tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Katie.
Thanks, Katie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. The next item, Madam Chair, is the summer food service program. Is just to remind the board that the Oxford Public School District. And has sent the border health a letter of their intent to sponsor a summer food service program. Particularly for children who would be normally able to access that. They had started that. They had started that program and it was very successful in the previous year. The program is expected to run weekdays from eight AM to eleven AM, beginning June sixteenth through August seventh. It's basically a grab and go breakfast and lunch offerings to be distributed at the high school through the program. Once again, the Board of Health is looking at the actual proposal and will be the ones to render a final approval on that. The next item is just to let the board know that we're all faced with issues related to budgets. And Bay Path, our regional vocational district school, is informing the board that they anticipate a major reduction in chapter seventy and have moved to amend their budget to place five hundred thousand dollars of excess and deficiency funds for operational purposes, in case this chapter seventy reduction is as extreme as they're projecting. The other thing that they did, since regional transportation gets done and reimbursed on the previous school year, since now we've not had buses rolling, they're concerned about not being able to be funded the same amount that they would have expected. So they've moved over four hundred thousand dollars into a regional transportation reimbursement fund. It's just important for the board to know this is a preventive effort on their part so that they don't have to come back to the different member towns to ask for a change in the assess- assessment. So we'll keep our fingers crossed that that will work for them in their budget. But that's, you know, looking at almost a million dollars. And so that's why we're going to start hearing some pretty serious numbers from both municipal and, you know, regional school districts alike. The next item is just despite the COVID, we have been getting a lot of questions about when bulk item drop-off was going to be. And I'm pleased to announce that we're going to do just, you know, one a day for each of the areas of town, June thirteenth from eight AM to three PM for residents north of Charlton Street and Sutton Avenue. And on June twentieth, from eight AM to three PM, for residents south of Charlton Street and Sutton Avenue. This is going to be at our transfer station, as always, at two hundred Leicester Street in North Oxford. But households are now limited to one load, not two. And we are going to have social distancing and masks are going to be required for anybody who is bringing items for drop-off. And the DPW employees will not be able to help to offload items as they traditionally have, to maintain social distancing. And so hopefully, we, with these restrictions, we'll still be able to have a successful endeavor that is a community service for the town of Oxford's residents. The final item, no, it's not the final, final item on my page, I'm sorry, is Carbuncle Drive. Property is now recorded on the registry of deeds. I know I informed the board, but I wanted to publicly inform residents that we have also not only taken possession of the land because of the ownership has been transferred, but we've also purchased title insurance on behalf of the town through our legal counsel. So we are now proud owners of a beautiful piece of property, right next to our Carbuncle Beach House and Beach. Also included in your packet is just a formal notice from the Attorney General's Office through our town clerk about establishments where defendants were convicted of operating under the influence. And they were served alcohol before being arrested. You'll see the attached information for the establishments that had actually been cited. And I was going to say that if there are any questions about that, you can get back in touch with me. But it basically had been one establishment here on Main Street. And that was Days End that had had those infractions, but it's all public record. And and I wanted to provide it to the board. Aquarian is going to be cleaning their water mains. They started on June eighth yesterday, but they're going to continue all the way to Friday, June nineteenth. Obviously, residents may notice that there might be some discoloration to their water. And if there's any problems or questions, they should definitely call Aquarian's customer service department at one eight hundred nine two eight thirty-seven thirty-four. Also included in your packet was another item that came from Aquarian's company with their statement of income. It's a two thousand nineteen statement of income, which shows their revenues and expenditures. And if there are any questions, once again, we have the ability to ask them to Aquarian's senior managers. The other item that I talked to the chairman about was the fact that we had been notified about a potential interest for a school committee vacancy. You had received an application for a school committee vacancy position. And my question to you is whether the board would like to wait to the annual town election, which was some of the thought behind the chairman, but he wanted to bring it before the board, to make a decision on whether they wanted to move to create a meeting like we just did with the Housing Authority for a joint appointment for that vacancy, or whether we wanted to allow the town meeting election to see if they have write-ins or or maybe this particular candidate would, you know, get in at that time. So with everything that's happened, it's not been the, there was some loss of paperwork submitted initially. And then there was just a delay with a number of items that we had. So the chairman of the board wanted me to put it on to see if the board had any desire in our next meeting to make a joint appointment or to wait for the election. So I'm all ears.
Board members, any questions? Any comments?
Yes, I do. You know, we're only a few weeks away from the election. I really think we ought to wait and let the process work its way through. I mean, we've done this in the past when it's been so close to the election. If people want to fill that vacancy, they can do it by write-in. I heard around town that there are several people that are asking people to write their names in. So obviously, there's an interest there. So I think we would be circumventing the process if we went and appointed somebody before the election. My feeling is let it play out, let the write-ins go through, whoever gets the most votes, it's a democratic process. They get elected. Simple as that. That's my opinion. I'm willing to listen to whatever anyone else has.
I agree. I was going to say, we're so close to the election at this point that I think we should just continue the way that we are right now and see what the people say come time for the election. And whoever had volunteered for it, they can get their friends and their families and their supporters to write their name on the ballot and get put in that way if need be. I I agree with you, John.
Jen, I have, if I may, I have a quick question on this. So just so that I'm clear, we're not talking about appointing someone to the school committee until the election. We're talking about this, we would, this would, this would be an appointment that would carry beyond the election.
Yeah, I mean, I I think that this was, you know, I think the person was hoping that they would be, you know, put on the board before the election and then also, because they couldn't get on the ballot, then also hopefully do the write-in. So it was a request, I think, initially was spoken to by the chairman of the school committee to the chairman of the board of selectmen. And then eventually, the interested resident, who is named Corey Burke, who I think really would like to do this. You know, my only recommendation to the board is if they vote to allow the regular election to take place. I think they were concerned that there was nobody who submitted papers. And therefore, we probably don't have anybody who would be, you know, putting themselves as a self-nominee with a writing candid- candidacy. So, you know, my my thing is if the board decides not to, you know, put it on the agenda for a joint appointment at this time, which I completely understand, I would be more than happy to send a nice letter encouraging Mr. Burke to to do precisely what Selectman Troyano had said. It's not that this is a reflection of the board not wanting to necessarily encourage people to step forward and to do interim seats, but obviously you could be appointing somebody for a very short period of time.
Right.
You know, so you're you're right on that, Selectman LeBlanc.
Okay. Okay. Selectman Daniels, do you have anything on this, or do you want to go right to a motion?
We can go to a motion. I I agree with Selectman Sad and Selectman Troyano.
Okay. All right, does someone want to make a motion in regards to our discussion?
I would make a motion to hold off on scheduling a joint meeting with the school committee and wait until the annual town election to fill the school committee vacancy.
I second that motion.
Excellent. So I have a first, I have a first and a second. Any more discussion? Okay, we'll call for the vote.
Yes.
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 And I vote yes as well. Four in the affirmative, one absent. Okay.
We will do that. And I think the board, sure. And I think, you know, just to reaffirm that the school committee does have a a good complement of board members so that this isn't risking them not being able to have meetings because they don't have a quorum. So I don't think that same urgency is there. So I just wanted to inform the board of that. And the last item on the town manager's update is to inform the board that Eric Pike has notified Chief of Police Anthony Sad that he was resigning from his position as part-time dispatcher effective June twenty-second, and he's moving out of state. So we want to thank Eric for all his hard work, and I wanted the board to be informed of that. And that would conclude my update.
Excellent. All right. I will move to, we will go to Selectman's request. Selectman Troyano.
I have a couple of things tonight. I just wanted to first, last weekend, when the outline for the next phase came out, just showed that Little League was allowed to be opened. I happened to see our Little League field was made beautiful by all of the workers. They all went in on a Sunday. Everybody that's dedicated to the Little League to get the field ready for the players when they come in. So I just kind of wanted to tip my hat to them because the field looks fantastic. And on the heels of that, I also wanted to give kudos to our DPW in putting out the potters. They look wonderful. They did a great job when they put those out. They always do a great job around town, making everything look nice. So I just wanted to give them another out on the back as well. And again, as always, to our first responders in our police department for doing what they do day in and day out. The next two things, I was approached by the, someone regarding sixty-eight to seventy Pleasant Street. Apparently, the culverts are blocked by brush and they make it difficult for them to serve their purpose. And the water ends up coming over, out of the culverts and into the yard and into the street. I just didn't know, not that I want to give the DPW more work. I didn't know if, Jen, maybe we could have Sean take a look at them to see if there's anything that we can do to clear them out so that they could be effective.
Sure, definitely.
And it is on both sides of the road from sixty-eight to seventy Pleasant Street. I don't know what the corresponding numbers are across the street, but they are pretty jam-packed from what I understand. And then the other thing, I just had a question. In our packet on Friday, I happened to see that there was a report from Kelly regarding a potential nuisance or aggressive dog. And she was looking for us to schedule a hearing on the dog. And I just didn't know if we were going to do that. It was towards the end of the packet that we received on Friday.
Sure, Madam, Madam Chair, at the risk of not discussing something that may actually become a public hearing, I know that the animal control officer has provided you that information in advance. There is a procedure that she goes through and an investigative number of steps. And, you know, if it's deemed to be with a complaint that may be filed to be put before the board, we definitely will put that before the board. So it goes through these normal steps and then it will be there. You know, we we can't really talk about something that we're going to potentially have as a hearing by weighing in that we should have it as a hearing prior to that. That's the whole point of having a hearing, so.
I understand that. It just, in her letter, she was requesting a public hearing because she had done her investigation. So I just didn't know why that wasn't on the agenda tonight.
Not on Friday. She said that she still had more to conduct. That's what I thought I had read. But anyway, that's, that I had thought I had seen, that she still had a number of steps. It was either in the email or the letter that she had. But it's not just a matter of her just saying that and then it comes on. There are a number of things that we need to have in our possession before scheduling that. I'm just saying globally, not about this particular case. So I'll look at that even more discreetly. And but it wasn't something that I had seen that it was completed at this time.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I had.
But I will check.
All right, great. Thank you, Selectman Troyano. Selectman Daniels.
Good evening. I have nothing to put out or say this evening, so.
Okay, very good. Selectman Sad?
Yes, I have a question regarding the the bulk pickup. I noticed that the the manager had mentioned it was reduced to one trip per family. Was that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now, is that going to be something that is going to be constant? Or why are we doing this? Why are we changing?
I think it's because we were trying to limit, I mean, Casella was trying to come up with a way to still make this happen without necessarily creating potential exposures. And so they felt that they could do it in a more limited capacity, rather than cancel the whole thing. So that's one of the things that I think we've been concerned about in negotiating with them. And so I don't anticipate that it would be something that would be in the future, that it was desired by either party other than the fact that we're trying to get people, in a way, safely in, out, and not have the exposure. Because if anybody is there, typically they've seen, you know, I think people have been able to bring up two loads because our DPW was so instrumental in moving stuff quickly out of cars. And so that allows them to do more than one load because the day, you know, only has so many hours in a day. And they try to be very efficient that way. But now, since they're not going to be allowed to unload and be close proximal to the items that are coming out or the individuals that are bringing those items, it will slow. The process will definitely be slower and then therefore would probably not even be feasible to generate, you know, a timetable that would accommodate that in one day. So that, I think that's the only reason, Selectman Sad, for now.
I'm just thinking of of the residents. I mean, they're they're used to doing this. A lot of them make two trips. I know they do.
Sure.
I've I've been there on some of those Saturdays and watched people come in and then go back home and come back again. You know, if a person has a set of furniture, you can only get, you know, a sofa and a couple of chairs on a pickup truck. And then if you have other items that you want to get rid of, you need that second trip. A lot of people do. Not everyone, but it's something that we have been doing for many years. It's been in agreement with Casella that we have this bulk pickup twice a year. And I I don't think Casella is changing this. I think we are. And and if we're doing it because of COVID, fine. But I don't want to see this become a norm. I think people are used to what they've been doing for many years. And and I support the idea that they continue to have the availability and the access to dump those two loads when, if they need to.
Okay.
That's just my opinion on it.
Well, and and who knows where we'll be in the fall, you know, in the past, you know, there there might be an opportunity to sort of still meet that ability to provide that service, maybe just not right now. But I agree with you. I think it is, it's quite the service to have for a community. Most communities do not have that as an option that is free to them. And so I I can imagine that the community does look forward to it. As I know, I have had that expressed to my office many times. So so but yeah, I I hear you loud and clear and and I appreciate the comments and we'll take that feedback.
I've heard remarks with some people that, you know, between the boat times, they have to get rid of, get rid of stuff and they take it up to console and they have to get on the scale. And when you find out what it costs, once you get on that scale, you say, wow, I'm glad Oxford has bulk pickup. Because if I have to get rid of a heavy piece of household items, I don't want to have to pay a hundred dollars or a hundred and fifty dollars to get rid of. items, um I don't wanna have to pay a hundred dollars or a hundred and fifty dollars to get rid of.
Yep. I understand, I understand. But this really is um because of COVID right now, as far as I understand.
Yep. That's all I had.
Excellent. Thank you, board members. I have a, I have a couple of brief comments I wanna make. Before we say goodbye for this particular meeting. Um as we men- as I mentioned, or we mentioned in the beginning of the meeting, uh we had a very important person from our community pass away. But everyone is important, but um uh Mr. Al Esposito passed away, and I just would like to say that um he was very instrumental in a lot of uh student successes in life. And it's very sad to um, to see that he passed away and also just wanted to s- send along my condolences to the Esposito family. Um I also would like to thank the town for uh and the residents. Um I think as much as we don't like it, um it looks, despite COVID nineteen, the taxes are just being paid almost as normal. Um and that's just a, a wonderful thing from our town to recognize that, you know, that's something that directly supports all the services that we do. So I'd like to say thank you to that. Um also, thank you to Carrie Singer, who's on here, for doing a lot of work for the Board of Health. And uh my last comment is, it's really an honor to represent this town and the fact that we are so business oriented and within just a matter of a handful of days, we were able to come up with this policy, discuss it, hash it out, and, you know, we really are pro-business here in Oxford, and we really wanna see everyone just get back as, as quickly as humanly possible to um, you know, some sort of semblance of normalcy. So I would just like to thank the town hall and the town manager and um, you know, for, for pulling that together so quickly on such short notice. But um it'll be good to get all those people out there. And I have heard from other, from other towns that they're struggling for responsiveness the towns to get those permits to be opened. So it's wonderful to see what we're doing to support all of those people. So um it's a great community to be in.
Thank you so much. Alright, everyone, have a lovely evening. If that's it, I'll call for, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
Second that motion.
Oh, I think you've gotten frozen, Madam Chair.
Uh let's call for the vote.
Oh, there you go.
Oh, gosh. How about now?
Okay. There you go.
Call for the vote? Thanks.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Alright, and I'll vote yes as well. All, uh so we, we are earned, and let's hope our um, our chairman feels better soon. Have a great night, everyone.
Stay safe.